At this time, I'll call the Marsh- meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like to welcome everyone to the meeting this evening. The we do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, operate under that agenda. The first item then would be to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting that was held on May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. The council does have a copy of the minutes. Are there any corrections to note?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve to approve the minutes as they have been presented. All those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We'll move then to agenda number three, which is a public hearing. This is a public hearing on regarding a home property attack, property tax abatement request. The location is six hundred Elizabeth Street. I will ask City Clerk Kyle Box to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The last council meeting, city council called for a public hearing to be held tonight. In your background material, you can see the difference in improvement in the estimated amount of assistance given to six hundred or the application is for six hundred Elizabeth Street. Be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions or input as part of the public hearing?
Oh, I do have a quick question. I'm fine at this, but is this good until the end of this year? This this? I don't want to call it an ordinance, but this program, do we have to extend it at the end of twenty twenty one? Or how long did we set it up for?
I believe the program goes through twenty twenty, December first, thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Okay, so we have another year. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or input?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Russ to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Then we will consider the resolution that would approve the home property tax abatement. Are there any questions about the resolution?
I move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Agenda number, the next agenda item is the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening. And they include from the wastewater treatment facilities improvement project, the application for payment to Magni Construction Incorporated. Consider the approval of temporary on sale intoxicating liquor license for Marshall Area Chamber of Commerce and to consider the approval of the bills in the project. Since there any item on the consent agenda, any member of the council wants to remove for purpose of a separate discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig to approve all of the items on the consent agenda. Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We'll move then to agenda number seven, the presentation of the twenty twenty year end audit for the city of Marshall. Earlier this evening, the council met in a special workshop and reviewed in detail the twenty twenty audit to in their regular session will have an overview and then consider the approval of the audit. I will call on Carla Drow and Director Finance to introduce the auditor and introduce this topic. Carla?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we have with us Nancy with Bergen KDV who has completed our twenty twenty audit for the city of Marshall. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Carla. Am I able to share my screen again?
Yes, you are. Okay.
All right. So I'll go through this rather quickly since we've already covered it, but thank you for giving me some time to go over the results of our audit to December thirty first, two thousand and twenty. I'm going to start by talking about the components of the audit. First and foremost, it's our responsibility as your auditors to issue an opinion on your financial statement. And what we're issuing for December thirty first, two thousand and twenty is an unmodified opinion, basically indicating that everything is fairly stated based on the results of our audit. We have some reports that we issue related to government auditing standards and then also compliance with major federal programs. Both of those reports include no findings and an unmodified opinion on compliance. So clean reports there. And then our last official report is Minnesota legal compliance. So this covers seven broad categories of legal compliance and again, no findings. So all of those reports, including no findings for this year. So have a communication letter that we issue and in there are several pages titled Required Communication. And I just want to point out tonight that there are no items to note there. All of that information is required by standard and does not stray from our standard template verbiage. And then we have some charts and graphs that we'll go over briefly tonight. That's where I'd like to go next. So first of all, your general fund, cash and investments and fund balance. You can see relatively stable over the last five years, increasing both of those at the end of fiscal year twenty. And when we look at that fund balance in comparison to your fund balance policy, you have a policy that outlines a minimum of five months expenditures based on next year's budget and the unrestricted portion at the end of the year was about six and a half months. So definitely in compliance with that minimum fund balance policy. High level look at your revenues, expenditures and change in fund balance in the general fund. Revenue a bit expensive expenditures down just a bit, a transfer from the liquor store fund allowing for an increase in total fund balance of a hundred and seventy three thousand for the year. Same information for revenues and expenditures on this chart, just highlighting again that small decrease in both. A little bit more detail on your revenues in this chart. Overall, again, they were down. It's about a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars. Largest variances coming in the charges for services related to COVID related closures. So in your community education and your pool revenues and some other charges services. And then largest increase in that intergovernmental category, up about five hundred and eighty thousand related to the CARES funding that you received for the year. Expenditures, again, down just a bit, about fifty five thousand dollars. So pretty, pretty break even for the year. And couple of categories that had some significant variances, general government down about five hundred and seventy four thousand related to a change in the library appropriation that had been handled in general government in previous years is now included in culture and recreation. So you'll see the offsetting increase in that category. Other amounts pretty stable year over year. Chart takes a look at your budget to actual comparisons. Overall, you had anticipated a decrease in fund balance about a hundred and ninety two thousand. You actually increased your fund balance by a hundred and seventy two, so outperformed that budget by three hundred and sixty four thousand. And we look at the far right column there, the largest variances you'll see, first of all, intergovernmental revenues over budget with the CARES funding that came in during the year and charges for services under budget related again to those community ed and pool related revenues being less than anticipated. Culture and recreation expenditures also down with those closures that we've already talked about. Moving then to your enterprise funds. Before we look at these charts, just high level, all of your funds have positive operations and positive position at the end of the year. The wastewater treatment operations pretty stable as far as revenues. Expenses were up in this fund, but did allow for an operating income of two hundred and sixty thousand. Both cash and investments and net position decreased in this fund primarily related to the expansion of the waste treatment facility and the amounts that were spent during two thousand and twenty. The liquor store had significant increases in gross profits and also operating income with minimal increases in operating expenses, allowing for that three hundred thousand dollar transfer to the general fund. This fund had increases in both cash and investments and the net position. You can see that here. Ending the year at two point eight seven in net position or equity value, if you will. And then finally, your surface water management operations, very stable operations in this fund. Revenues were up about twenty five thousand, expenses up about eleven, operating income and at the end of the year of two hundred and forty nine thousand in this fund. And here it's the position of that fund, both cash and investments and unrestricted net increasing cash and investments more so due to an issuance of a bond in this fund during two thousand and twenty. And then finally, two charts to take a look at your revenue and expenditures in your governmental funds per capita. And you can see that the city of Marshall is higher when we look at the middle columns in both of the both sides of the chart here. So statewide averages for cities of similar size. One twenty three, city of Marshall, a thousand eight sixty four. And most of that variance comes in the intergovernmental revenues. Cities your size typically receive that LGA funds, but you do still receive that money. So that variances in that intergovernmental category. And then finally expenditures per capita also above statewide averages, which is what you would expect. You're spending what you receive in revenues and taking a look at that, each category is is a little bit above, but it's kind of even across across all areas. Questions, comments?
Thank you, Nancy. We'll open up for any questions or comments. If not, Carla, do you have anything else you want to add?
Want to thank Nancy and her people for working with us through these strange times and doing a lot of remote. We do, we're able to get someone on site this year and that went well as and it was nice to have somebody on site to do a few things. So thank you, Nancy.
I think we'd also thank the staff, our staff that has worked on this note that for the first time in many, many years, there has been no findings in our audit. So very good. That's the the result of quality staff doing quality work. Thank you. Any other comments or input?
I just have a quick question. Is it mine or one of us going through this? Um, page seventy two, the wrong dates are for when terms expire. They're completely backwards.
Okay, so we'll make that correction.
Yeah, unfortunately Craig leaves in twenty twenty one.
Fortunately, you said?
Yes, and I leave in twenty twenty three, and I think Bob, yours is wrong. It's these, they're backwards. So.
Okay.
No, Steve, you can't leave in twenty twenty one.
I thought it was gone.
Okay, well, note that. Any other? Great. Any other input? If not, thank you. This time I would entertain a motion from the council to accept the twenty twenty year end audit.
I would move to approve that.
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We'll move then to agenda number eight, consider the approval of the twenty twenty one service agreement between the city of Marshall and the Marshall Visitors and Conventions Bureau. With us tonight is the Director of our Convention and Visitors Bureau, Cassie Weiss. Cassie?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So just going back, we had lessened our contract due to revenue being down and the Red Baron being closed. In the last two months, we've kind of been able to get back to normal at the arena and our six month contract is up. So we are looking to go back to that seven thousand dollars a month that we were at pre-COVID. Some things that we've been doing through COVID is we were able to get the Fairbanks Ice Togs in town, which brought seventeen games as well as over a hundred hours of practice that took place during the day when there were no other practices to compete with. And this also brought in people from at least twelve other states outside of Minnesota, and they came for multiple weekends to watch games. And they have also agreed to come back in the future as well and do a weekend in Marshall for next season. So we're really excited about that. This spring and summer, we were also able to host the Home and Outdoor Show, the Spring Craft Show and Four Weddings. We are hosting a summer hockey tournament in July. And then this fall, we are, we have a craft show, a gun show and bingo that will be hosted at the arena. We also have a lot of ice rentals that are starting this month from Maha, the Figure Skating Club, as well as a lot of other communities around town. And then for twenty twenty two, we do have eight events that are booked for the arena that will be open to the public and four private weddings. So. Yeah, I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Cassie. Questions for Cassie? Russ, anything you want to add?
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor. On the agreement, it says that they will coordinate city owned facilities of the Shawan Regional Amateur Sports Center. That's amateur sports. That include the fields?
That would include the fields, correct.
That includes the fields, okay. All right. Thank you. And then my last item, Cassie, and I think you made reference to this at one of our meetings. Said on item number five, that when requested, you will make a report to the city. I'd like to see that made as an annual report to the city. And the on the such reports and documents shall include a list of special events sponsored by C V B with the amount of revenue and expenses. So just like to see that presented to the city on an annual basis.
Yeah, I can add that. I usually come in December and I can add that into my December presentation.
Very good. Any other input for Cassie? Or any other questions on the proposed service agreement? It's good to be back to normal programming there, so.
I move approval of the twenty twenty one service agreement between the city of Marshall and the Marshall Visitors and Convention Bureau.
A second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Joe. Discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Cassie. We'll move then to agenda number nine. Consider approving the recommendation made by the Joint Law Enforcement Center Committee to accept the lowest quotes for the replacement of carpeting, lighting and ceiling tile at the law enforcement center. This is the Joint Law Enforcement Center. With us tonight is Chief Jim Marshall.
Right. Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate your time. The agenda item in front of you tonight is a request from the Joint Law Enforcement Center Committee for the council to consider approving the second phase of the remodel repair project that we started a year ago in the public portion in the records area of the law enforcement center. Tonight's request is to complete the same scope of work for the carpet, ceiling tile and the lighting replacement for the secured office area of the building. Maybe just for a quick review and maybe for Councilman Ed Bloom's benefit, just to give you a quick review where we've come from in the past three years. In two thousand and nineteen, we had new leadership with the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department, and we were immediately challenged with some major updates and repairs that need to be made. Maybe you can remember those from the HVAC system to the electronic door locking system that we had to do. At that time, we pulled together the Joint Law Enforcement Center Committee, which really hadn't been pulled together for quite some time. And that committee strongly encouraged us to come up with a long term plan to address the needed or anticipated repairs to that facility. Part of those meetings, we, the county and the city agreed to plan twenty five thousand dollars each for the next five years to address those needs. And maybe I should just throw this out there. We know that there's going to be a major expense coming eventually, hopefully longer than five years, but with the replacement of the roof. Last year, we received quotes for doing updates to the entire main floor work area of the building, both records, public area and the office. And those bids came in higher than what we anticipated. So the decision was made to break that into a two year project. So we completed the public area, the records area. But we also knew at that time that just based on square footage, our expenses for this year's project was going to be a little bit more than what we initially planned for. And if you can recall, we asked if those remaining parts could be carried over into this year's project. Last month in in May, we pulled together again the Law Enforcement Center Committee, which consists of two council members, Mr. Lozinski and Mr. Schaefer. And we reviewed the quotes that were received by the county. And at that time, our council members encouraged the county to receive additional quotes for those prices. And fortunately, we received more quotes and it came in fifteen thousand dollars less than the original quotes that we received. I think our hope tonight is that the council would move forward with the this project. And if you do, I don't know if you all have in front of you your agenda report that breaks down the little graph of maybe the the quote or the right there with the quotes that we had received and maybe where they kind of fell in in line with the different businesses that submitted something. So I'll open up to any questions or if Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Lozinski has anything to share.
Okay, thank you, Jim. We'll open up for questions.
Oh, I just said, you look at this ace's bid, it's correct. That is not a typo or he did not miss anything.
It's a real solid bid.
And I guess I'm going to toot the whistle of Craig and I went and then Jim, when these came in, Jim and I and Craig walked up to PD office and Craig and I looked, so there's no way that these players should cost what they did. Because they only had a bid from one competitor at a time. And I don't know if it was our doing or hopefully they were planning to get two bids, but we said, you guys need to get another bid. Where the second favorable bid is, I mean, I'm also toot our own horn, but I think that was a push by us. And you were with us, Jim. We said, this, this isn't going to work.
Yeah, we couldn't spend that kind of money. So it's, it's good. And and I, I think that the, the committees went working very well. I'm very encouraged by the by the the cooperation and 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 Jim and Sheriff Wallen have done a good job of kind of getting the things laid out and getting us answers to the questions and doing the due diligence to truly make sure that we're working on areas that that truly need it and and doing it on a good priority basis. So I think the the things are working pretty good there. So I'm, I'm happy with how this is going.
Very good. Any other questions or input? If not, I believe we can, you know, even though there's two components here, there's the electrical as well as the flooring, but handle is all in one motion.
I would make a motion to accept it. Actually, three different bids, flooring, ceiling and electrical. It's three different contractors. So I'd make a motion to accept the three little bit.
A second. Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, who want to vote on, favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Jim. Move then to agenda number ten. Agenda number ten is the Tiger Lake Lift Station Control System Upgrade. With us tonight is Director of Public Works City Engineer Jason Anderson. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. So city staff has been discussing an update of this lift station's controls for quite a few years now. The Tiger Lake Pond serves a largely residential drainage basin of over five hundred acres. The effective operation of Tiger Lake is crucial to our flood control in that drainage basin. The water level of Tiger Lake is moderated by four stormwater pumps. Typically, they don't all operate at the same time. More pumps kick in as water levels rise higher in the pond. Currently, our wastewater staff physically has to visit the lift station site to monitor the pump levels or the water levels and make pump adjustments. Further, if a pump fails or goes down, another pump won't automatically kick on until water levels hit the necessary stage to kick another pump in. Because this lift station's so critical during rain events to the city marshal, city staff would like to include this lift station in our supervisory control and data acquisition system or SCADA system. By including this in our SCADA system, we'll have the ability to monitor pumps and control the lift station pumps remotely, which would give us much more flexibility. If a pump fails, another one can automatically be called into duty. Staff can remotely view from smartphones or tablets what's going on and call different pumps into into action. The upgrade of the pump controls is priced at thirty thousand, six hundred and sixty eight dollars. Staff would propose to pay for this with some of the funds that have been recently refunded to the city from the Corps of Engineers. We had one hundred and twenty nine thousand, six hundred and sixty one dollars refunded back to the city that we had intended to outlay on the levy improvements project. And we elected at the last meeting to to not participate in that project. If there's any questions on this, I can try to help address them. And we've also got wastewater superintendent Bob Van Moore on the call to help us as well.
Thank you, Jason. Are there any questions? Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jason, a couple of things. Number one is I know that that we're also planning on doing some of the work that we pulled off of the course proposal, doing it on the city side, but there'll still be adequate funds left in this return to facilitate that also if we do this improvement, correct?
Yes, we believe so. We haven't put together what we're going to do exactly with on that end, but off the top of my head, I'm thinking under, under thirty or forty thousand dollars of of work on the levee. So I think that there'll be plenty of money left over with both expenses taken into account.
Very good. Thank you. And then one other question, and and this might go better, better to Bob also, but
you know, the, I appreciate the availability of SCADA, just as a side note, with some of the the cyber intrusions that we've seen, we're continuing to work to secure, cyber secure our SCADA from from hacking and outside interference, correct?
Yes, we have a very strong firewall coming into our SCADA system. So that's, that's worked through the computer man with all of the city networking.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, John?
Question, Jason. I'm assuming this is alarm. So if something occurs mid evening or something, you don't have to be watching it to let you know when things start kicking on? Is that?
Yes, there'll be alarms will be taken into account. Yes, that's correct.
And then who all does the monitoring? How many are monitoring locations do you have?
Currently wastewater staff. Go ahead, Bob. Currently wastewater staff monitors all these SCADA issues. Have a very large SCADA program at the treatment plant. Our operators are, have tablets or smartphones available at home. So if we do get after hour alarming or issues or even why just call in and look in to see what's happening, we can do that remotely.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve.
So my question would be, what is the counter argument to this? What are the impacts if we don't upgrade this piece of equipment right now? And when was the last time this was upgraded and?
Nineteen ninety five was the last. Nineteen ninety five is the last time we did any major controls or improvements at the station. So it is quite, quite antique and you know, the motor starters and everything have been upgraded at that point. Now it's just more of the controls that everything was manual prior. And if we're running around busy on a rain event, that just lessens the time that we have to be monitoring that station. Driving out there physically looking and seeing what's happening and stuff like that. So it gives us a lot of flexibility and it's going to save us a lot of time and especially high rain events.
I can also help with that too, the the consequence of of failure at Tiger Lake, which we have had that in nineteen ninety three. And then I think after that, at least on one occasion, the the water backs up in the storm sewer system. And then not only goes over Saratoga Street and back in those adjacent streets, but it also goes all, you know, the Southview Edition, it backs up there, it backs up even as far over towards the old James Avenue and in that area because all that drains right, you know, to that area. So.
Yeah, I was in comments, you brought it up. In ninety two, I watched the system back up. It was like geysers coming out of the storm drains.
Ninety three. When was the bypass built, though, unfinished?
The twenty three, seventy five, seventy four.
Right. So this would be all stormwater. So there was no, wasn't impacted by river at all.
Oh, yeah, no, it was very neat to watch in ninety two. I was younger, so I thought it was cool. When you got a twenty foot geyser coming over a storm drain, probably isn't cool to somebody else. But it was neat.
Okay, good questions. Good discussion. Other, any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, second by Jim. Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item number eleven, community feedback on the funding of future needed projects. We did have some discussion on this at a work session where future projects, including the Aquatic Center Improvement, and the discussion was really getting a kind of good input from the public and do that in a way that was kind of professional and scientific so that we knew that we were dealing with the data. So presenting this, Sharon, you will share in Hanson City Administrator.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just to review a few items, we did cover aquatic center financing options at the May nineteenth work session. And I don't know, Kyle, you just want to pull up, I did a short presentation. And not only did we talk about the aquatic center, we talked about what makes Marshall great and what are some things that are in need. So if you could just once again, go to the next slide. And those are some things that were mentioned as part of the branding effort. And then the next slide after this is some things that we considered and know based on community feedback initially about our park and recreation projects that we'd like to see proceed on in addition to the aquatic center. I did cover, I believe, on the next slide, some revenue options to help pay for the aquatic center. And one of the additional items in addition to the regular bonding is a sales tax method in order to pay for the aquatic center. One of the considerations that we have been discussing on the staff side and along with Baker Tilly, the individuals from Baker Tilly joining in on this conversation, I will turn it over to them in a brief amount of time, is Matt Stark, who's with the Research Arm of Baker Tilly. And then I also believe Terry Eaton, who is most of you are familiar with, does our financial bonding consulting on a regular basis. But we we feel it's important to kind of test or get some feedback from the community on what would be some viable options to to fund not only the aquatic center, but would there be other considerations for potential projects? The 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 sales tax legislation allows for up to five projects. And we would want to consider exploring other additional projects in addition to the aquatic center if there is support for it. We did seek a proposal from two firms. You do have in your packet a the proposal from Baker Tilly. We reviewed both proposals and and we like the Baker Tilly proposal because of their methodology and Matt will explain a little bit about that further. But let me also expand a little bit on the merits of this. And I wasn't here when when the city explored the sales tax option in twenty twelve through twenty fourteen. But I suspect there was a lot of energy and work put into that. And I I see no less happening this time. We do have to get legislative approval. We would want to have public support before going to our legislators and asking them to support a sales tax extension. And we want to be efficient with city time for employees. And if if the community supports that, we have a good feeling about the use of our times and we can be more productive. In addition, besides the sales tax, we do want to explore those other financing options, too. We will give some rough projections on tax impact and try to explain that in the survey and and so-called test, test the responses of of those that we seek via the survey and see what path they would like to go for. We believe that some of the regular bonding would have a larger tax impact than a sales tax revenue impact because we're seeking revenue from the region, obviously, instead of just inside the city borders. So I'm going to turn it over to Matt to talk a little bit about methodology. How would we go about it? And also, maybe, Matt, just, you know, how you would actually conduct the survey. Believe it is via telephone and and maybe some potential timing of it. So, Matt?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all tonight. Um, as you may have heard, I'm with Baker Tilly. And for the last five years or so, I've been working with communities around the Upper Midwest on a lot of referendum referendum planning projects. We've honed our methodology over the years. Because these are generally high stakes projects, we have to nail things down and deliver responses that we believe are representative of the community as a whole. So to that end, before we launch a project, we take a look at the city in demographic profile so that we know ages and incomes and where people live. And after we analyze that picture, then when we're going out to do our our random sample survey, we can make sure that our sample represents people from every part of town, from each age group, from income and educational attainment and and just any number of factors. And as a result of that, even though we might only talk to three hundred people, we can have a pretty high level of confidence that we're getting an accurate picture of people's feelings around whatever project it is we're measuring. Our proposal for Marshall is to do a survey of approximately thirty-five questions, which in terms of phone time, that would be around a fourteen or fifteen minute interview. We don't like to go much beyond that. Once you hit about twenty minutes, people start to lose attention and they stop answering your questions thoughtfully and they just start answering in whatever quick manner they think will get you off the phone. And then then to do three hundred complete interviews with people, which gets us to a margin of measurement error of around five and a half percent plus or minus. The idea here would be, we generally do a three benchmark survey. We found it works very well for applications such as this where we would go in after introducing ourselves, we would ask kind of a cold question, giving people sort of a one or maybe two sentence outline of what it is that's being proposed and just get their initial reaction to that. Then we spend a little time presenting more details about the project. So in this case, it would be the the projects that you might be completing, the the improvements that you would be making. And we would get people's reaction to a cross section of those. And then after they'd had a chance to hear some of the details about whatever the proposal is, we would ask them again, basically the same question, just couched in terms of, okay, now that you know more about what we're talking about, would you support this or oppose it? And the idea there is just to see that initial level of acceptance or resistance, and then if the information, the details about it will move the needle one way or the other. It's a good way to give you a an idea about how popular these different aspects of the project might be, which elements are valued the most by your community and which might be less popular or controversial. And then that can inform your decision making going forward, knowing basically you having a clear picture about what the community values, what they want, what they're willing to pay for. I mentioned earlier, we generally do a three benchmark test. The third benchmark is when we put a price tag against the project. That's generally a critical piece. Lots of people tend to be supportive of things that sound like a good idea. But as we know, when it's time to pull out the checkbook, some of that enthusiasm can wane. So asking a third time when there's a price tag attached is a good way of finding out what the true level of support is. And if the project is too ambitious, it gives you an eye, an opportunity to maybe scale back to something that the community is more willing to tolerate. That's basically what we bring to the table, the combination of this kind of three-step testing methodology and our efforts upfront to make sure that we get a representative sample of your community allow us to come back then with a set of responses that we can say are reflective of the community at large and can give the policymakers some tools that they need as far as determining how best to proceed. If there's any questions about my introduction so far, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Matt. Sharon, before we move to questions, I'll turn to you to.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on one other item that Matt and I discussed. One of the reasons we really like Baker Tilly on this particular proposal is the integrity of the formulation of their questions and along with the methodology, who they're going to survey and that it's scientific, they're going to make sure the different parts of the community are are surveyed in the age groups and 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 things like that. But the formulation of the questions, they're very careful about ensuring that they're not leading the respondent to answer it in a certain way. And I don't know if, Matt, you want to talk a little bit about that. That is something that we will not do in this survey. We will not lead them to answer in the way we want them to.
Sure, I'm happy to elaborate on that. We're very sensitive to the fact that we are performing a community survey using tax dollars and that advocating for a particular course of action, especially in terms of of tax impacts, would not be appropriate. So our approach has always been to look at this as a it's an opportunity to listen to the community rather than trying to broadcast a message out to the community. I work with a lot of communications professionals at cities and school districts who have a very focused mindset on messaging and put, you know, in influencing the community and we butt heads with those professionals all the time because that's that's not our approach. We want to take the temperature of the community and then come back and explain to policymakers what it is we're hearing in neutral terms. And then using those responses that you get from the community, that will allow you to tailor a message down the road. If there's a a citizens committee for, you know, vote yes for whatever this is. You know, it it that's that's the appropriate venue for those kinds of of efforts. So we're going in very neutrally on this. I assure you, I'm not going to be pushing people into any particular responses. I am honestly curious on every one of these projects, what it is that the community has to say. And it gets back a little bit to what I was saying before where we work to get this broad cross section of the city, and that's going to include a lot of people that generally don't interact with City Hall very much. And so it gives everybody at City Hall a chance to hear from some of these voices that they might might not otherwise interact with. And so I feel there's a lot of value there to giving the decision makers an unvarnished look at what the community values and what they're willing to pay for and what misgivings they might have.
Thank you, Matt. Open up for any any questions or discussion. John?
Matt, I just a question, it sounds like about three hundred individuals or whatever we surveyed. Are they going to know ahead of time that they're being requested to do a survey? Or how cold of a call is this?
From my end, we would be coming in very cold. We did, we're generally not sending notifications into the community that this is coming up. It can be a challenge sometimes if it's an unrecognized number, you know, we'll have to call a lot of households to find enough to participate. Response rates are are low and getting lower every year. That being said, we do oftentimes work with a city if 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 we want to give people a heads up that this is coming and encourage people to cooperate and participate, that generally works very well. It's best if any sort of announcement of that nature is couched in fairly general terms so that it's, you know, it's good for people to know that there's a survey that's going to be performed in a particular week. And maybe in general terms, what what the topic will be. But we don't want to spoil people's reactions by giving them a lot of details ahead of time. Like I say, that that initial benchmark that we take is intended to be an initial reaction without information. And so if there's a lot of chatter in the community ahead of time and people are expecting the call and they've been ruminating over it for some time, that kind of defeats the purpose of getting that cold reaction because it's not really cold.
Yeah, just gonna say I have a little, that'd be part of my concern and that and the cold because, you know, just speaking for myself, if I see a toll-free call, you know, caller ID is great from my end of it, but I see a, you know, toll-free call come up in the header or eight hundred something or other. Yeah, I would guess that phone's not going to get answered. So.
Well, I can tell you, you're not alone in that reaction. We have to dial a lot of numbers to get three hundred interviews.
And then kind of building on that, Matt, and I'm sure you have a method here, but the you know, those households that have landlines, those households that do not have landlines, both will be included in the random sample?
Oh, yes, most assuredly. I've been averaging about two thirds cellphone interviews over the last couple of years as more and more households abandon their landline. We have a number of data providers that we work with who can provide us with the telephone numbers that we need and some of the demographic information that we need to set up our representative sample. And been working with a couple of these outfits now for four or five years, and they've been very good about providing quality data for us to use. One nice thing about a survey of this nature is that this is political research. We are, we are, we're interviewing people in the community to find out what the community thinks about political issues. And as such, we are allowed to call cellphone numbers even if we don't have a pre-existing relationship with the the number holder. If this were a a commercial survey, that would be illegal and we would be fined six ways from Sunday. But fortunately, the legislation around do not call lists and telecommunications, especially wireless, that there is a carve out for political research, which is what this is. So that makes it a lot easier for us to get through to people who have cell phones because we don't need to have a an existing relationship with them in order to contact them.
Thank you. Other questions? Russ?
Mr. Mayor, I I agree with the comments that have already been made, but I'm struggling, Matt, with the three hundred number based upon a population of thirteen thousand plus. You know, that's about a two percent of representation of our population. I don't know what the last school bond referendum went through, but, you know, I don't, I don't, it was probably a lot higher than two percent. I'm just struggling with calling only three hundred residents to get a, you know, their opinion per se.
Sure. And the I'll try not to get in. Sure, and the I'll try not to get into the math too much, but the 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 science of statistics is such that the margin of measurement error on a project like this is far more dependent on the number of calls that you make, you know, the number of interviews that you complete than it is on the target population. If you're looking at political surveys, you know, before a national election, um, you know, in the months leading up to the presidential election, we would see regularly surveys that were between 800 and 1,100 interviews for a nation of, you know, 360 million people. And those would have a margin of error of plus or minus 3% or plus or minus 2 and 1/2%. So, you know, if you can do the entire nation with 800 to 1,000 interviews, um pairing that back to 300 interviews, like I say, it it causes the margin to be wider. You know, we'd be talking about plus or minus 5 and 1/2% on whatever our our target responses would be. So, you know, if we said that 57% of our group thought this was a good idea, um, you know, you'd have to put the brackets around it and it'd actually be between 52 and 62%, well, 51 and 63%. And most of the surveys that I do are between 3 and 400 interviews. That's kind of the sweet spot where we get the margin down to something manageable uh without breaking the bank as far as um the number of hours that we have to have people on the phone to get the interviews done. So, yeah, it seems counterintuitive, but you actually can get a very good picture of a community with um just 300 interviews. I did a project, I think, last year in St. Paul where they wanted, I think it was 600 interviews and um that was for, you know, a city of 280,000, so um they had a little bit extra money to spend on it, and that was the way that they went. For me to do another 100 video or videos, another 100 interviews, just um for the sake of argument, I believe that our cost for that would probably bump up of another 14 or $1,500 to add those, and that would get your margin down to 4.9 plus or minus. So basically from 5 and 1/2 down to 5.
And Russ, you had another question?
And and Matt, I I I'm going to go back to Councilman De Kramer. I too, if I see an 800 number on my landline because I'm morbid, I I still have a landline. I 99% of the time, I'm not going to answer it. So if we proceed with this, I would encourage that the city or someone market or advertise somehow, some way that this survey will be conducted because, and again, I'm going to agree with Councilman De Kramer, I'm not going to answer that call if it's coming from someone that I don't know. I get enough spam and junk junk calls anyway.
So, by the way, I want, you want to extend your warranty in your car?
Yeah. One of the things that Matt and I talked about was a little bit of um communication on this. I I do think it is important um not to have people gang up on us like Matt said, but uh so that they're totally not surprised. We probably do need to do a little more updating on the pool just in general. I know we've had a number of residents kind of curious, where are we at with the pool? What's the next step? So we, which is separate from the survey, but we probably want to do that. And and I I had intentions and I still do and I will, um, you know, doing some small group conversations, um business leaders, um some other groups and just talking to them about the aquatic center and some of these other projects. And again, um, I'm not trying to hedge them or push them one way or the other um either, but I want to make them fully aware of our options. One of the reasons we are looking at all this is that for the pool, for sure, we can't fail. I mean, we, that has to be done. And um if we're going to spend a lot of energy going forward in in finding a revenue source, it'd be just kind of nice to know what kind of foundation we're starting on and, um, you know, if they don't like one method, we'll look at other methods to go forward on it. So I I do think giving some indication on this is really important, as John and Russ have stated, but um I think we also can do some communication in small groups.
Matt, would you clarify the caller ID uh incoming number that will be will be a toll free number that will show up? Will it be a local number?
It would likely be something out of 651 area code. I could look at getting a number that was more local if we thought that would help. I've generally found mixed results with trying to get something too local just because the spammers are really good about finding a phone number that's on the same block that you are and and using that. So I don't think people are any more likely to grab something that's hyper local just because that's been abused uh in recent years. I am happy to work with the city as far as putting out a message, um, you know, if you've got it on the website or in the newsletter or something that says, we're doing a community survey for planning purposes and it will be held the week of, you know, whatever the dates are. And, you know, if you get a call from, and, you know, we'd likely be using one of our regular call centers, so it'd be something like if you get a call from Logos Research with a 651 area code, that's us, please participate. And like I say, we don't want to put lots of nitty gritty detail in an in an announcement like that, but giving people a heads up that there's a survey out there and if they'd be willing to uh look the other way as far as telemarketers and spammers for, you know, a four or five day period while we're doing our interviews, um, it can make a difference as far as our response rates.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
I was gonna say, using a local number, I think is a bad idea because I get very irate with people do that. I may even be rude to them. Don't use my neighbor's number.
Oh, yeah, I'd half the half the spam calls that I receive are from my own exchange in St. Paul.
I've had my phone number at home. That one I was very rude to.
I, my wife got one from herself a year or two ago. Yeah, that that was puzzling.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if Terry just wanted to add a comment or two since we do have her on the line as well. She did initially obviously give us her our revenue options and and uh maybe just a little comment from her.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and Sharon. Um, the the reason I think this is so important is because of the process of going to the legislature, which is, you know, now they want more specifics by project of what you are asking for, and you have to go to the state first and then you come back to do the local election. And that's a lot of process and time without really knowing what the community is seeking. And so if we can use a survey to, you know, provide or to to work on those projects that you really are wanted by the community, then to go through all the effort with the the legislature and come back, you have a pretty good idea that those items that you've got through the legislature will pass locally. So I just think it's a huge time saver to know that. And plus, um, I think especially with the pool, uh, when Sharon tells me, you know, that the options are really to, uh, you know, something has to be done because it needs a repair. It's not that you can, you know, they just totally decide if you want to start with a new pool or not. This is an existing situation that's going to have to be addressed. And so to bring people in early and get their opinions, um, it just seems like it'll be a time saver in the the amount of communication that you do to really target the right things from the start. And that was our thought in moving forward and knowing, you know, the 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 community and just wanting to do the right thing for them. It just seemed like a great time to get the right information first.
Any other questions? If not, uh, thank you, Terry. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Sharon. What are the wishes of the council on this recommendation?
I will make a motion to approve the agreement with Baker Tilly to conduct the community survey.
Motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion?
My question, Mr. Mayor, um, when we chose Baker Tilly, and there's no question they do good work, but did you look at alternative options? Because I know that there's been scientific studies done by SMSU and they've got groups there and again, phones are great. I think the statistics shows that the 300 number is probably okay. Would it be nice to have more? Sure, but that's a greater cost. But because of all the spamming, I'm not sure that we'll even get 300. That's the problem, you know? I used to answer everything and and because I'm county coroner, I still have to answer everything and it frankly bugs me because you do, you get so much crap nowadays getting through and I I'm trying to figure out the best way to ensure the most return on the investment. So I'm wondering, are there alternative ways? Do you just put out? I don't know. I I don't know.
Sure.
We did seek out another proposal. I think they had done some work for the school district. They, the the other firm does probably more work with school districts. And again, it was really more about methodology. We didn't want a firm that was just going to call 300 people randomly. And it was more about getting a representation from the community. And this firm and the proposal you have in your packet does that. I'm not sure the capacity, SMSU, I don't know if the mayor or somebody else knows that, I'm not sure that exists. I think the U of M used to have a research branch that did some of this as well. But um that's what we looked at. We did seek out another firm, had conversations with them and just really feel it's important to get representation from the community and and the methodology by Baker Tilly was was good and the integrity is there. That was really important.
And are we going to be able to ensure that we get representation from our minority groups such as our Somali groups and our Quran and our Hispanic people who already, you know, are slightly marginalized because they don't have access or don't trust the access or? And that's very important, that those representations are and opinions are exceedingly important.
Matt, Matt, do you want to address that? We have approximately 18% of our community is a minority. How can we be sure that their voices are heard?
So as far as language options go, um, English and Spanish are easy from our perspective. Some of the some of the less common uh languages get to be exceedingly expensive as far as doing the translation and getting the phone operators. So if we wanted to reach out to uh, you know, Quran and Somali speakers, um, from my perspective, the proposal cost would get very high, very fast. We we don't only have to translate the survey instrument, we have to recruit the telephone operators with those language abilities and then we have to translate. That can run uh $3,000 for each language that we that we need to do. So that and for that cost, you're getting, you know, again, if we're looking for a representative sample, if if this group is 10% of your community, um, that would be 30 out of the 300 interviews that we're doing. And so you wind up paying $3,000 for 30 interviews. From my perspective, I don't think that's the most cost effective route in the past where we've had communities where we've got some of these um smaller um immigrant communities to reach out to. We generally recommend that we do the regular survey in Spanish and English to get that that piece of the community, which is generally the the majority. And then when we've got um some of these smaller communities, uh, we would encourage you to to leverage the local resources that you have. Especially, um, like I said, I did one of these in St. Paul last year and we've got plenty of um unique sub communities within the city. And with, say, the Quran community, um, we're talking about families that fled a civil war and now you've got strangers calling them on the phone, asking them their opinion about the government. And even if you've got a native speaker, you can't get cooperation. They don't, you know, the, they're generally not comfortable answering that kind of question and and don't want to make waves. So you generally have to leverage your local relationships and reach out to leaders in those communities and see if you can put together either a focus group or or a quick, whether it's a town hall meeting or just kind of a a coffee get together. And then find out basically at firsthand, using those local resources, what the concerns are from that group. Like I say, I've I've had bad luck in the past trying to get responses from these immigrant communities. Like I say, even if we spend the money for the translation and the speakers, um, depending on the circumstances that you're that your group, you know, if it's a a refugee community, it's really hard to get them to talk to strangers.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, other discussion? If not, the motion on the floor is to accept the recommendation. I'll call for a vote on that one. All those in pair with the motions.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Kyle, you have the vote? The motion does pass. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda number 12, agenda number 12 is the consideration of termination of the local state of emergency. As we all know, this was, has been in place since um March 17th of 2020. The there's, we've made a lot of progress and based on um where we're at today, based on the most recent recommendations from the governor's office as well as the Minnesota Department of Health, it'd be my recommendation that we end the local state of emergency.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Don. Discussion? I think this also does, excuse me, this also coincides nicely with our, um, we're meeting in person for the first time all the city councils since March of 2020. Good possibility that our next meeting will be in the new city hall that will accommodate the public attending if they so choose. We'll still have, you know, the broadcast and the video options of viewing the city council meetings, but this does kind of fall into place with where we're at with our physical locations. Steve?
So I am all in favor of it. Again, I I'm vaccinated and happy to be that way. As we go into our new city hall, my question is, you know, how do we deal with that if we pull up the uh state of emergency? How do we still mandate or encourage social distancing for those who aren't vaccinated? And how do you check to make sure people are vaccinated? Because you can't really, I don't think we want to go down the rule that says you can't come to a public meeting unless you're vaccinated. I'm not comfortable with an acting that and I'm not even sure legally we could do that. But that being said, I would hate for somebody, I would hate for Marshall's city council meeting to be the source from a secondary outbreak because we have something that has a lot of public who aren't vaccinated who come. So I guess, do we set up limitations on how many public can come in? Do we, you know, those kind of things? I'm all in favor of.
What is the current CDC recommendations? In my opinion, is this because I'm with you, see if I'm vaccinated?
Right.
And I'm to the point that there's a vaccine out there if people don't want to get it. I tell you, tough kahului is if you don't believe in science.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, that's. There's that rule too, because those of us who are vaccinated, we're probably pretty safe.
Yeah, I mean, not to sound mean, but there's an offer out there for people to protect themselves.
Right.
But going back to that, what is the current CDC recommendations?
Yeah, for for public gatherings and a government standpoint, I guess I haven't looked at.
There's no limitations after May 28th, correct?
Right.
On size or distance?
Yep. Go back to 100%.
Uh, but I also think you're absolutely right that the, you know, we can't require, but we can, you know, recommend and, you know, maybe some signage that might be, this is what the best practices would be recommended if you're attending a meeting here.
Right.
And actually, since you brought that, I just read an article. And actually, since you brought that, I just read an article. It's a pretty good article, one of the papers you get at home. The new normal is this is a new normal, because people, there are some people that will not get vaccinated. And small Corona outbreaks are going to be the new normal for
No question.
Probably for eternity. So Russ.
Mr. Mayor, I think not to mention one business in town, but I think there's a sign in Menards. If you have not been vaccinated, we'd appreciate it if you'd wear a mask.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm I'm okay with that, you know.
I mean, would that state, would that be something that we could just put if you have not been vaccinated?
And if you're sick, here's a mask.
And again, you can't force them to put a mask on, but if you just put a sign there, if you haven't been vaccinated, we'd appreciate you wearing a mask.
Well, and there's the other side of that, too. It's, you know, we focus on vaccine because that's the one thing we can definitely check the box, yes or no. But the other side of that is, is if you've had COVID, you have a, you know, you have a natural immunity to it also, and that that's not a prerequisite. So I think it is back to exactly what you said. Councilman Labatt is, you put it out there that if you haven't been vaccinated or you know, you don't know, we'd appreciate you wear a mask and then social distance. But if you've been vaccinated, we're we're open. This is here we are.
Sharon, do you have any comments you want to make? Or Jim? I don't apologize for putting you on the spot.
That's what you get paid for.
Yeah, I think signage is really important and continuing education. We can ask if people are vaccinated. If we have a business purpose, I don't know if we want to get into that. And you know, maybe if we believe there's going to be high attendance, we have regroup and talk about some safety measures with Dr. Maister and and the mayor and and see. Generally, we don't have a lot of attendance and I know that, you know, it depends on the agenda. But yeah, definitely continuing education on this, so.
Well, in the new city hall in the lobby, there'll be a video screen right outside the council chambers. And that's where notices could be, you know, posted and could run across there and it might might be the encouragement, if you're not vaccinated, wear a mask. It might be on some size limitations. It might be, you know, here's the timing on the agenda for when a certain item might come up.
We should, and I hate to bring up a change order, but we should put speakers on the outside so that when people are standing on the sidewalk and can watch us and hear us.
No, I don't know if I'm in favor of that.
That one won't get out of committee because the chairman won't bring it up in the committee.
Might be a traffic issue.
Yeah.
Or you or you could poison the event at the at the open space. After all, people are like, would you turn that off?
Yeah.
We're trying to relax.
Well, I I just comment, I was in Sioux Falls yesterday at a doctor appointment. My wife had a dental appointment. In the morning, we walked into the dental office, no mask, no nothing, no requirement to wear one. But then I went to the doctor appointment at Stanford. And oh, you must have one on. It was mandatory for everyone. I thought, well, I've been vaccinated. Don't matter. She said, I said, okay. But yeah. Society is kind of split between.
Well, I don't know. No, that's a CDC recommendation because even though everything is free, healthcare is always different because we have sick people in healthcare. So unless right now, even though you're fully vaccinated, you come to any hospital, any clinic, you are still following for those states who have decided to follow the CDC. You have to wear a mask. So that's that's a CDC guidance. And South Dakota is a lot more free than Minnesota. Our state actually is tighter in many respects than the CDC.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, the motion on the table is to end the local state of emergency. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so we'll move then to commission board liaison reports from my standpoint, the Southwest Regional Development Commission, the revolving loan fund, which the chair will meet tomorrow and the board of directors will meet on Thursday and that will be their first in person meeting since March of twenty twenty. So there where we're at now. With that, and this is kind of nice because I don't have to remember who's in what order because you're all in the right order now. So let's start, Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, airport commission did not meet. The merit board met on May twentieth. I was not able to attend, but Jasmine has graciously given me a cheat sheet to make sure that I hit some things hopefully well. First bullet is things are really picking up, you know, it's again, we're coming out of the COVID and stuff. So things here at Merritt have have really stepped up and just for January through May, the classroom and or the driving track has been used a hundred and three out of a hundred and fifty days. So that's that's pretty darn good attendance. The year to date, there's twelve hundred and thirty nine people have attended training and events here on the merit on the merit campus. Some highlights over the last few months, I know we touched on this before, but I want to hit it again because I think it's very important. On February twentieth and twenty first, the National Fire Academy hosted fire investigation and it was first responders for, you know, that was the fire for the for fire investigation, first responders for thirty one firefighters. And that was the first time that the NFA ran the course in the entire state. So we were a first in Minnesota. And they're waiting to get approval on a three module course for calendar winter twenty twenty two. So we're not just getting the regional focus. It's a statewide and almost a national focus. So I think there's that's a real good tribute to to the work Jasmine and others have done here to get this promoted. Avera holds their monthly leadership meetings here and they're booked to do thing, do that through the remainder of twenty twenty two. And that's forty to fifty five people that attend. So they really like this facility and it's worked out really well for them. On April tenth, Merritt and the Marshall Fire Department held the first Southwest Minnesota Fire Conference. And that had education provided by Central Lakes College and Fire and EMS, which is out of Brainerd, which I think is another good thing to say that they see the value here. So even things that Minnesota West is not picking up. You know, the other parts of of Minskew are picking it up and seeing the value of our campus. That event brought seventy firefighters here from across the state to attend their choice of five different courses. And then there were also five fire service vendors that were on site. So I only see that growing to those. That's a real, real strong presence. Redwood Falls Police Department had their entire department here utilizing the use of force simulator to qualify their officers. So that's another really good thing that I know there's an intent and a hope to to continue to build on that capacity. And then now mechanic or the Mankato Police Department is bringing twenty officers to run a pit course on the track in August. We should actually see if we can sell like off campus, maybe high tower view of that. That could actually become quite entertaining. Maybe, I don't, I suppose August, we get trouble the fairgrounds to compete with the demo derby. But we could do some, they're going to do pit in August. They plan to do that three or four times a year. They were very impressed with the facility and the track. So I just think that that's really great news for Meriden. And I really want to give a a call out to Jasmine for all the work that she's done. I think it's it's just been phenomenal what's happened here and I'm really proud to be part of that. That's all I have.
Could Craig, I have a quick question. Maybe you can answer Jasmine. On those trainings, how much of that is overnight? Because that's that's very important because that brings even more money in the communities. How many of those are overnight?
Well, like the February twenty twenty one, that was definitely overnight. I would have to believe that some of them that came for the the for like even the one day, depending on how far they traveled, they probably stayed at least one of those nights, probably the night before. Yeah. And so you know, and that and as we continue to try to build that out, I think that's the thing about having the repeat conference. So once people understand the quality, the demand will come up more. And I think we're going to see even more overnight or expansion of even maybe breaking out more availability and running it for multiple days. When when the fire schools really get established, it's not uncommon to see them actually run two full days with a zero day either in front or behind for special certifications because a lot of firefighters will take off early at noon on Friday to travel for Saturday, Sunday conference, knowing they're going to get back late on Sunday. So I just think it's all positive as this builds out. I don't think Jasmine's lost anything that she's picked up. I think everything's led to something more. So I guess she builds it. It seems to hold and grow. So I think it's just really positive for merit.
Very good. Thank you, Craig. Yep. Steve?
Mine have not met, Mr. Mayor.
And Doug?
Planning Commission will not have a June meeting. There are no items on the agenda coming up and Public Housing will be meeting next Monday, but I will be out of town all week next week.
And John?
EDA, we took action on one of the items that they discussed. There was also discussion last meeting of promissory note for UCAP that was due to delaying of any building that UCAP did, they wanted to get the dates for the promissory note to match up and that action went through. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission did meet, they had a presentation by Southwest Initiative Fund regarding a welcoming time in September. I was not able to attend that meeting, so I don't have a lot of details on it.
Russ?
None of mine have met, Mr. Mayor.
Jim?
We worked on the LEC agreement, that committee, and I'll give a brief update on City Hall. You're correct, Mayor Burns. We're hoping to be there in two weeks. I believe we have a solution to one of the life safety issues on fire. It's a fire coating. Sharon will probably lead into that. I'll be frank with the public, we are north of thirty days past our contract based at point or days. They're thirty days over. They never asked for an extension. I will say between Ray, I and Sharon, we have had called many times pushing them to get this done. I mean, I'm frankly, I'm not necessarily been pleased with response that we got from the architect or the builder. We keep pushing them because we should be in there tonight. I'll be frank, we should be there tonight. I'm done tiptoeing around them. They need to get it done and I and we will keep putting the pressure on them, whatever we can to get it done. And like I said, I'll let Sharon, I was busy yesterday and today, so I didn't I get an update on City Hall because I have my own stuff I'm building. So I'll let Sharon update us on where the status is.
Very good. Thank you, Jim. We'll move then to council member individual items. Craig?
Got nothing, Mayor.
Steve?
You know, I just want to thank Public Safety and a lot of my role as again, county coroner, we have a lot of good young officers who see a lot, go through a lot and they just do a wonderful job. And so I can't thank them enough for their help and people need to show them appreciation because some of the stuff they see, they'll never unsee and I'm just thankful that we have them and they're good people. So if you ever get stopped by the police or the sheriffs, thank them. They're doing their job and they do a darn good job.
Good. Doug? Jim?
Um, the only thing in stages of the past, last week, it was great to have that back in town out there, good crowd, you know, you bring up crowds. There was a good crowd out there and and I ran into Councilman Schaefer and and Public Safety should have probably removed him from the site, but that's all right.
That's just, that's just one person's opinion.
But it was nice to see that crowd back. People, you know, we had our stage out there, a band singing away. Hot as it was, I felt bad for those guys, but it was it was a joy to see a festival back in Marshall. And I just, that's a very positive thing, so.
Very good. Russ?
Two things, Mr. Mayor. I did bring it up to city officials, so just information for the rest of the council. A citizen called me regarding the building on Third Street in Maine. It appears that some of the tiles are coming loose up on top of the windows again. And they said if those tiles pop and a child or an adult is walking on the sidewalk and comes back and hits them in the head from that far up, it could be considerable damage done to that individual. So just to bring the other council members up to that, I did talk to our city building official. He was going to look into it. So the other thing I have is kind of a kind of a personal peeve on mine is that, you know, since I've been on the council a short time, we've spent, and I'm going to use Freedom Park as an example. We spent a hundred and eighty thousand dollars on a bathroom up there. That's was a greatly needed bathroom facility. But really, what really grinds me is that when I walk over there, even the the six dollar trash can is smashed inside the restrooms. I mean, it it's just, there's no pride. The the changing table in the men's bathroom on the side is completely almost tore off the wall. You know, I it's just that it bugs me. I mean, we can see our parks, we we do, pardon my terminology, a damn good job of giving the citizens nice parks. Our park and rec staff does a good job of trying to maintain them. But yet, and I I don't want to be in the police business, but I think the citizens should take a little pride in their in the parks and what we have. And if they see somebody doing something, ask them not to do it. And don't get involved in a confrontation and me and just say, hey, I'd appreciate it if you didn't do it. I mean, I've seen little kids swinging on our new trees, breaking off the branches of the trees and and the picnic tables in in Freedom Park. I seen some kids there one day to actually taking a baseball bat and banging on the top of the table. I walked over there and I said, you know, those are our tables. Those are public use. I said, all you're doing is damaging your table and my table. We don't care. So I just bring it up that the public should take a little pride in in what we're giving them. You know, and again, in all of our parks and all of our facilities, I wouldn't go to anybody's house and break windows intentionally and just whatever. But I just think we're giving them nice parks and we're giving them nice facilities and and we should all take pride in 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 the facilities and things that we're giving them, you know, and whether it be that five dollar trash container or that twenty five or thirty dollar, a hundred dollar changing table that's now halfway tore off the wall. It's just, it's disappointing. It's just really disappointing. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, Russ, thanks for bringing that up. John?
Uh, just you made the comment a little earlier, just a thank you to our finance department. You know, we've hit, went through an audit that no findings. Two years ago, there's a lot of apprehension on the finance department because we did ask to change the audit group. Because I think changing auditors is a good move on any board or commission's part. And having the same auditor for quite some time, they were obviously a little apprehensive and concerned about the work and everything else. As we can see tonight, they came through shining stars all the way through good one of the best audits reports that we've seen in a while. So just a big thanks out there to Annette and Carla and all everyone else that put into it, including Sharon. So thank you.
Thank you, John. I just have two things, the kind of building on the parks comment that council member Labatt brought up. Patriot Park, there's very good progress being made on the construction of the shelter and bathrooms there. So it should be on schedule. I believe their schedule is that it's going to be complete and open by July first and it looks like it will make that in plenty of time. City Administrator Hanson may want to also include this in her report, but the there is a hundred and fiftieth committee that has been meeting. And that there's at least three or four subcommittees that have also been meeting. So they're so the planning is well underway. And they're at the point now of having many, many ideas. And then now we probably need to funnel it down to what's actually deliverable for the hundred and fiftieth celebration in twenty twenty two. Any council members wants to join that committee, that's an open invitation. They did meet yesterday. I was unable to attend that meeting, so Sharon can probably report on that. With that, let's move into staff reports and we'll start with City Administrator Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have a hundred and fiftieth committee meeting yesterday. You are a co-chair, which I think you sort of volunteered for. But Nikki DeBoer, who is a member of the committee also is is your is your partner in in chairing the meeting. We've got really good staff support and community support. We did add a another community member, Steve Klein, volunteered as well. So we've got him doing some things for us in addition to him sitting on the committee, but really good ideas. We reviewed a logo for the hundred and fiftieth, and I think we we're very close to that. And that means we can start doing some publications. We'll probably do a press release. And do a little about getting the word out. If we have some events upcoming like National Night Out, maybe Fourth of July, we'll we'll hand out some material to to reinforce the hundred and fiftieth celebration, which will coincide with Sounds of Summer. So Sounds of Summer Committee, we do have representation with Mark Clay. And that'll be key for us because the bulk of our celebration, of course, is Sounds of Summer. So to tie it in with that particular event is really important to us. So hopefully we can make it extra special next year on City Hall. You know, in some ways it was good. We had a little more time, just thinking positively. I know on May twenty eighth, which wasn't too far ago, long ago, rather, they just completed furniture installation. And so there was a lot of work being done in in the last two weeks of May, getting that in place. And, um, yes, there's some, some items that are on this punch list that just need to make some movement as Councilman Member Lizinski has stated. One of the key factors is some fireproofing that needs to go in two key areas of city hall. We do believe that there's going to be product loaded on a FedEx truck and hopefully we get it by the end of this week or early next week. And we have a local contractor willing to put that on. So I think if we can get that on, we can, uh, start vacating SMSU. SMSU has been very lenient on, on, uh, when we stay longer. And, uh, we've been taking it on a week by week basis with staff and, um, not been too definite. And we have given some tours here and there, um, because we're not technically occupying the buildings. So I believe the building inspector is okay with that. Today I did take noon rotary through it and I'm sure that you've heard this feedback as well. Just really good response on the look of the building, uh, how it contributes to downtown and Main Street. And, um, they were very impressed with the building. So, um, just happy to be where we're at, even though we're not fully, uh, fully into the, um, city offices at this point. We did have a plaza, city hall plaza input session last week. Got good feedback from the Downtown Business Association. We did have a few members of the public, uh, give us comments on the plaza. We didn't have great attendance. Last week was a really busy week for our community, uh, with graduation and as, um, others have mentioned, some celebrations within the community. So, we did get a good feedback and we'll try to get more of a final conceptual design. And talking with Park Superintendent Preston Stenzert, he feels pretty confident we can proceed. We're still taking some ideas and inputs. Um, so if you're out and about traveling and you, uh, see something you like, certainly share it and we'll see if we can consider it. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any questions for Sharon? If not, we'll move to, uh, Director of Public Works City Engineer Jason Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, some of you may have noticed the Seal Coat project has started today. Um, I think the contractor hopes to be done by end of day tomorrow. A newspaper had a really timely article in the paper today that gave folks a really nice warning about that project. So that was, that was really nice. James and Camden Project, the contractor has finished with the pipe installation work across the golf course. And you've probably noticed that Country Club Drive has been closed as they do some work with that storm sewer across Country Club Drive. Hopefully by end of day tomorrow, they can get that all put back together and, and passable again, but we'll see how things go. North First Streets still, uh, cruising along. Um, they're working on some utility service work. Now, and they're also starting some of the street work back on Marshall. That's, that's still moving. City Mill and Overlay Project is largely completed. There is one block of West Marshall that's technically included in that project that's not done yet that they'll be hopefully getting to in the next week or two. And the state aid mill and overlay should be starting, uh, as early as this week yet, but we'll see how contractor schedules align. One other, uh, note, we city staff did recently find out that the city marshal will be awarded one point two five million dollars in local road improvement program grant funds for the Channel Parkway paving. Uh, you may remember that we came to the council a few months back and, uh, asked for you to authorize us to apply for that grant. And our Assistant City Engineer Jesse Dean put together, uh, a very strong application and, and the state has rewarded that with a one point two five million dollar grant. So as a reminder, that'll be a two thousand and twenty-three project for surfacing of Channel Parkway in its entirety. So we're pretty excited about that. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Jason, and, uh, congratulations to your staff, um, for putting together that very competitive application that was successful. So, very good. Any other questions for Jason? Okay, Dennis? Okay, Jim, do you have anything you want? Okay, we'll move on then to, uh, the remainder of the agenda, which includes the administrative briefs, which you have for your review, the information items that includes our building permits. Um, and our listing of upcoming meetings. Is there any other item to come forward at this meeting?
Move we adjourn?
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to adjourn discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.